Good evening and welcome to our second budget work session. During our last workshop, you heard about budget guidelines, revenue projections, as well as from our human resources department. Tonight, you will hear from other major budget managers that includes student services, special education, technology, and curriculum and instruction. And we will begin this evening with our student services presentation by Director Katia.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for having me here tonight. Happy to share some of the proposals for the upcoming budget for the student services department and just share some of the highlights and changes and answer any questions you may have. So some of the areas that we oversee in student services, a plethora of items. What you'll notice is that there are some staffing areas in here and within student services, some of those are in our budget and then some are within the school budget. So even though we oversee areas like counseling and psychology, you'll find those within building budgets versus areas like behavior specialists where you'll see those represented in our budget because they're district-based. So it's really three different areas that make up the student services budget and we'll break those down over the next three slides so you can see a longer-term look back over the last several years. But it's broken down into the central office department, special services, and then non-public services. And something just to note, the fluctuations that tend to happen over time, you'll notice we typically have a higher proposed budget versus our actual budget and some of that is because of the implications of other sources of funding. So for example, our title grants, which we'll talk about in a couple of slides, sometimes pick up some of those areas that we budget for within the general fund, but we end up picking up in the title grants based on which schools qualify. So the first area is under the central office and that has our administrators. We had, last year, we had a teacher on special assignment in the student services role that switched to a coordinator, an administrative role, and that was a coordinator of social emotional learning. And so that's been a really successful role this year, but a new administrative role. So we had the difference in that salary between a teacher on special assignment and the entry-level administrative position. We have myself and then we also have the coordinator of equity and inclusivity, which is actually funded out of some of the COVID relief grant funding. We have our clerical fall under this area and then all of our general office funds. The next area is under special services. So that's a lot of the pieces that you saw around our school physician, our English as a New Language program, our behavior specialists. We also have contracts in here for areas like Pittsford Youth Services and University of Rochester Medical Center. And again, some of those are offset with grant funding, which we'll talk about where that kind of looks over time. So some of the things within here, when it's broken down a little bit further, there was an increase in an area of behavior support for one of our schools that actually was picked up within the Title I grant because that school was qualified as a Title I school this year. And so you'll see that that will offset, even though we're preparing to be able to fund that out of the general fund if needed. And then under non-public services, this is where we have a lot of our health services for our private schools. So the private schools that are within our catchment were responsible for having nurses there and the supplies associated with that. And then any substitute nurses that we have in that area and any of the technology that's associated with that as well. So mentioning the title grants, those are the complementary revenues that we also manage out of the student services office. So the numbers of these entitlement grants fluctuate a little bit year to year. Title I is based on student need. We look at our free and reduced student number to decide which schools qualify under Title I and we use that to support things like behavior support, as I mentioned, school social work, reading support, Pittsford Youth Services and social work services, and direct tutoring support for our students. Title II is really around professional learning. So we work in partnership with the teacher center, with Melanie's office, to be able to fund a lot of the professional learning initiatives and even paying for our teachers to take courses or teach courses here within our teacher center. Title III is for our ENL students. This year, we fell below the threshold to be able to work in isolation for Title III. So we've partnered with HFL and this is the first year that they've been able to access their ENL funds. So we went knocking on their door and they were excited to be able to work together. So we run that Title III grant, but they are a partner with us so that we can each access those funds. And that's used for things like resources within the classroom, but also tutoring for our students. And this year, we're hoping to be able to use that for staffing to help support a summer program for our ENL students, which I'll talk a little bit more about. And then Title IV is really an umbrella title for safe and secure schools. It can be used for everything from technology, safety, mental health supports. And it's important to note that our Title II and IV grants, we share those allocations with the private schools that are within our catchment. So the three private schools that are within our district zone, each receive a portion of those title grants as well. So just a few things to highlight that were changes for this year. You have some of them listed there, but I want to just take a minute and talk about our tutoring center, which has been invaluable this year, I would say, being able to pull back from using the BOSI's contract, which we were finding we were not able to secure tutors, particularly when students were out for shorter periods of time. So if a student was out for three days on a suspension or even a shorter term leave for mental health needs or physical needs, we were finding that we were never able to meet our obligation to get tutoring services for those students. And now it's happening within a 24-hour period, sometimes even within the same day. If a student is out of school, they're able to come here, write to district office. We have a special education teacher, Jessica Sabour, who has been just balancing lots of students at many different age levels and it's been remarkable to be able to see the difference of having kids here and receiving that support versus being at home and not able to connect with their teachers, their support staff here at school. So that's been wonderful. And our coordinator for social emotional learning was another big lift for this school year and the ability to be able to resource map some of the increase in mental health supports that we've had over, say, the past seven to 10 years. Her work with those departments to actually break down who's doing what work, what work is yet to happen, where are the gaps, has really helped us to use, start to use those staff more efficiently and get an understanding of how they complement each other, looking at the entire mental health realm of services that we offer. And the other thing I would just say is we talked a lot about threat assessment last year and over the summer, we put our behavior intervention teams in place at the building and district level. And those are now in place and operational. We have our district team meeting every other week and our building teams are meeting sometimes weekly. And being able to watch that happen and have a connection to the buildings with that in a way to be able to manage those cases has been really helpful. And this year, having the Safe Schools Help Line, it has been a great compliment to that. So we've certainly gotten some tips from that to be able to help us give support to our students in need. A couple of other things. This is a picture from one of our Rock to Change groups, of which there were several times when they went to the other schools to be able to share what they were doing. And so that was completely student-driven, being able to come down and have an impact at the lower level. So just something really exciting for our kids to be able to be a part of. And we've continued with our community engagement with our power hours around school safety and supporting our students with anxiety and worry and social media most recently. So those have been really popular as well. We have some anticipated projects coming up for next year. I mentioned the ENL Summer Program, which we are starting to plan now to be able to bring in some of our SCIF students, so students with interrupted formal education, and our newcomer students to be able to work through a multi-week program to be able to bring some more literacy support to help bridge any gaps. We also are hoping to continue to grow our tutoring center and be able to bring back even more. There are some times where we're two-fold to be able to have our students here and have had to go back to BOSI's for some of those longer-term needs. So we're hoping that we can continue that growth. We have been working with Dr. Kimmer and the data team on an exciting conversion from SNAP, which is what our nurses currently use to house all of our medical information for students. So it's a separate student management system. And so we're going to be integrating to Infinite Campus, which is of course the system that we currently use. So we're rolling the nurses over into that. That will be a cost differential that we'll see. Right now, we're working on training and with Jeff's team, working to build that to be exactly what our nurses need. So it houses everything that SNAP has and we hope even more. And then one other thing to keep an eye out for, our prevention coordinator, you may have seen, is retiring. So Ann Kane has been with us and has done an amazing job with working with our drug and alcohol prevention program. And we'll be looking at that role to see if there's something we can do there to also help as she transitions out of that role to also focus on family engagement and additional supports for students along with drug and alcohol prevention. And that is all I have for you. Happy to answer any questions.
Shane, I would just add, I know you touched on this, but the tutoring center has been a game changer from many lenses, from a perspective of a student not being home and doing no work, to a student being able to come to Barker Road, be engaged in their schoolwork, receive additional supports, and also have others pay attention to why they're there. If it's mental health, we're able to bring in mental health supports. If it's because they're suspended, to allow me, principals, and others to reinforce why that behavior was not right and make sure they're in a good place before they come back. It's been a very positive experience for all, I think. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Elizabeth Woods and Central Services and Special Education.
Good evening. So I'm going to present to you the budget, the proposed budget for the special education central services area. As you're aware, we recommend special education services for preschool-age students and we also provide all special education services for school-age students, which would be any of our students aged five to 21. We also are responsible for providing special education services to any of our students who qualify, who attend one of the private schools within our school district as well. We work hard to foster an inclusive culture. We are working to support students in general education settings as much as possible and also support continued inclusive clubs and activities. You will see, similar to the student services presentation, that many of our staff members are included in their individual building budgets, specifically special education teachers and paraprofessionals you will see in the budgets for each building that they work in. So here is our trend of the number of students aged five to 21 who receive special education services in our district. We have shown a gradual increase in the number of students over the past 10 years. This year, we are pretty comparable to last year. So we currently have 743 students aged five to 21. In addition, we have arranged for preschool plans for 75 three- and four-year-olds as well. One of the data points we monitor in order to be aligned with our goals of supporting our students in general education settings is the percentage of students who are in general education for 80% or more of their day. So you will see that we have been trending upward in this area. We currently have just over 66% of our students who receive special education services are in general education settings for more than 80% of their day. So the special education central services budget falls in three main categories. The first category is the special education office. So this is the district office that consists of both clerical and administrative support to oversee our Committee on Special Education and our Committee on Preschool Special Education. This also includes interpreters for families, some private contracts, legal fees, and also covers evaluations and special education meetings that need to be held over the summer as our requirements and our timelines continue during the summer months. The second main area for central services include the two staff member areas that are not included in individual building budgets. These are our speech-language pathologists and our adapted physical education teachers. We currently have just over 13 speech-language pathologists and we range between three to four adapted physical education teachers. These are physical education teachers who are teaching adapted physical education for certain parts of their day. So it's not a part-time person, it's just part of our physical education teachers' positions. And that ranges, changes based on the individual student needs throughout the year. So this area includes those two staff members, district-based, as well as all of the supplies and the materials that they need. This also includes, we reimburse the license fees for our speech-language pathologists because that allows us to receive Medicaid reimbursement for some of the services that they provide. And the final area for central services for special education is the largest area. This includes all of our outside placements and services. So this is any special education program that is either provided by a private special education school that we recommend a student attend or BOSI's. This also includes all of the services that we provide to our private schools. We use BOSI's to provide those services. We are able to bill back districts of residence for those services for students who don't reside in Pittsford. And also, this includes all of our physical therapy and occupational therapy services for all of our students, including the students who attend our nine school buildings. Those service providers, we access through BOSI's. So in addition to the proposed budget, I just quickly wanted to share a couple of the areas in which we receive specific support to offset some of our special education costs. We do receive a federal grant for school age and for preschool each year to help offset some of our special education costs. We don't have those numbers for the next school year yet because they don't give us our allocations until very late in the school year, usually around June. But you'll see based on the history that that total has remained pretty flat for us. So we can pretty well anticipate what we will receive in that area. We are required to distribute a certain percentage of our federal grant to the private schools in Pittsford, as well as the private special education providers that our students access. And we use the grant to support our special education functions and also to provide specialized services and supplies for students who have unique needs. We also receive some Medicaid reimbursement for some specific medically necessary services. So for us, at this time, it would be physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech-language therapy. You will see that last year, we received just over $90,000 in Medicaid reimbursement. And again, that fluctuates year to year depending on the individual students and what we're eligible for. That was an increase over the previous year, primarily just by the nature of the way we delivered our services during the 2021 school year. It made the reimbursement a little more challenging. And then New York State also has some specialized state aid categories for special education, specifically public high-cost and private excess cost aid. And you'll see that last year, we received over $600,000 in aid in those two categories. And that's based on the students who are eligible for that aid from the prior year. So that's offset by a year. That was a reduction in aid from the previous year. And again, because the aid we received last year was from 2021 and that's the year that due to the hybrid model, our ability to claim that aid was different than it would typically So in special education, you know, we've seen that we are continuing to try to provide increased general education access, which means that we've been building our ability to provide consultant teacher services so that our students can be successful in general education. We are also excited that we were able to transition our assistive technology specialist position from a private contract to a district employee for this year. That is paid out of federal grant funds, so it's not in today's proposed budget presentation. But that's been a really nice improvement for our services and aligning our district services together. We also are proud to, we are proud that we have best buddies chapters in all nine of our schools this year. That's been exciting for us. And I'm also excited about our reorganized and active Special Education Parent Teacher Association. We've had a very strong partnership as they've kind of reorganized and it's given us some new parent advisory opportunities to hear from parents in special education. Challenges that we face remain related to wait lists for some of our most specialized programs. We have had students with significant needs who are awaiting a placement for a significant amount of time, which means that we have to be very creative about how we support them in the district during that time. And we are also having some staffing challenges, as you've heard of. Primarily, the staffing challenges are occurring in placements outside of the district, but we certainly have found some struggles particularly in securing long-term subs for some of our more specialized positions. That's been a challenging, a challenge for us. So in summary, our proposed budget for central services, special education, we are not anticipating any significant changes or increases. The increase that you see is really just related to the expected tuition cost increases and contractual salary increases. Are there any questions?
So I just have to add, one of the things, it's a budget presentation, I get to ask, so it's not as much about highlights, but one of the things I'd have to mention is we have 743-plus students with IEPs that are our most complex and most beautiful students in our district. And our approach is regardless of your level of IEP or disability, we do our best to keep our students here in our Pittsford schools, which is a tribute to our teachers, our administrators, our special ed department, our Board of Education. Our students with disabilities are our students and we do everything we can to make them successful here. And you've done a phenomenal job with that, so thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, next, we have our instructional services, technology instructional services. Matt Kwiatkowski.
Good evening. My name is Matt Kwiatkowski. I'm the Director of Technology. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to be talking about technology services as well as BOSI's support services and the proposed budget for next year. So just some background information, technology services really is responsible for the support and maintenance of both the technical and the instructional systems that are leveraged really throughout the district. We support and maintain copiers, we have phones, tablets, a lot of different peripherals, interactive panels, printers, copiers, as I mentioned, servers and Wi-Fi. We provide high-quality professional development through the teacher center and just the overall infrastructure throughout Pittsford schools. And we do this all with 14 full-time staff members. That's myself, one administrative assistant, eight technicians, and four instructional technologists. We also have two audiovisual assistants that are at the, shared between the high schools and they also get out to help with the middle schools and as well as the elementary. And we have one print shop manager through BOSI's who is retiring soon. On the BOSI side, this budget is not only used for the BOSI services, but it's also used for software. And this goes far beyond just technology, right? This is something that's used throughout the organization, not just within technology services. So as an example, WinCap goes through financing and resources, professional development software. All different departments are using Infinite Campus, IEP Direct, Medicaid Direct, Family ID, Office 365, Blackboard, and the Communication Alert System. So my staff, my team, they do a lot each year and I'm always very proud of everything that they accomplish. Over the last year, we've closed out roughly 9,700 help desk tickets for both students and staff. The guy behind me, Anthony Juris, he primarily supports our student help desk and day in and day out, he's on his email checking with students, checking in to make sure that they have their answers that they need and he's working endlessly. Even as I looked over there right now, he was on his email, so thank you, Anthony. We also support an average of 4,400 wireless connections per day. We have roughly 300 million events happening on our network monthly and we try to maintain a pretty good uptime for our network. Over the summertime, a lot of the classrooms are emptied out, students, staff are, a lot are gone. Custodians are working to clean up things. And we're also in there also cleaning the technology, reassembling classroom and instructional spaces, and working throughout the district to configure one-to-one devices and getting ready, things ready for September. My instructional staff, they've also been working on a lot of different professional development courses, creating and developing and implementing these courses through Discovery Education, NearPod, Office 365, Teams, and various other ones. I've got two remarkable, fantastic instructional technology teachers, I don't know if I've ever talked about them, but Dave Moscato and Gwen Skobinski. Dave supports our five elementary buildings and Gwen supports our four secondary buildings. Their goal this year was to bring in awareness to the computer science and digital fluency standards. And they've been working in a very collaborative nature with a lot of our classrooms, a lot of our teachers, a lot of our students, to explore what it means to be part of a digital community. As you can see the pictures here, we were getting into the classrooms, working with teachers, we're trying to bring this awareness to them before they're having to be implemented in future years. We're also working with our students to use digital tools to think critically and create digital artifacts. And finally, we're working to develop computational thinking skills through the algorithms and programming. This short GIF here, I was there for that day and it was quite remarkable to see the students just cheer. It was full of excitement. The map, the image doesn't do it justice, the map was huge. The kids had to program their robot and getting it from that home base over to where it ends was a lot of perseverance, persistence, a lot of different challenges that they had to overcome in order to do that. And they had to work together as a team to kind of get there. But like anything, there's challenges, there's obstacles that were presented with day in and day out. As we're implementing new systems, it's developing that shared understanding of the functionality of how everything works. It's balancing the innovation that we have with the safety and the cybersecurity of our programs. It's addressing that continual, how do we refine our systems while also providing and maintaining the support we were all expected to. And then there's the expectation of 24/7 uptime. I want it, and I want to make sure that it's working and working consistently. And then there's that long-term hardware replacement cost because within all this, a lot of this stuff takes physical resources to accomplish. And as we look at this year and we, as we close out this year and we look at next year, we've got some anticipated technology replacement costs. First, the big one, the device renewal. For grades six and nine, it's a continuation for our one-to-one initiative, putting devices in our students' hands. But it's also the growth for our one-to-one initiative in grades three and four. For three and four, this is going to be more of the, similar to the fifth grade one-to-one initiative where it's in school only, it's not being brought home, but it's in school. So there's going to be a cost associated with expanding that out to these four grade levels now. Additionally, we're looking at faculty-staff laptops now that are five, six, seven years old in some cases and having to replace all of those. Also, along the same lines, we've got storage. Storage is the backend of our, of where everything, all our files reside and it's that, you know, five-to-seven-year replacement cost that we're looking to then upgrade that storage system. All of this can be, we can leverage different funding sources such as the federal grant funds that are available, as well as some general funds that are available too to help support this. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of that later on in the presentation. So looking at several years of history here for technology services, over the last few years, it's been generally pretty steady, but this year, you are going to see an increase due to the need of two additional technical staffing. an increase due to the, the need of two additional technical staff, staffing. With the increase in devices, we, we really need to have, we're trying to align what we have from a FTE to similar districts and try to get the, the technicians back up to being able to support our buildings in a, in a one-to-one type of environment. On the bottom right, you can see the pie graph here, most of the overall budget here that we're looking at, most of that is our, our salaries in there. And actually, it's a little over 60% that is allocated to salaries. And like I said, we will talk more about the breakdown of all of this. For BOSI Support Services, we work closely with our business office to, to really dial in this number, because this year, we're, we're, you've got many different departments that are associated with BOSI Support Services, so, so I do work closely with our business office to, to come over with the $1.5 million. And really, what you're going to see from last year to this year, the proposed budget is pretty flat and steady, not much of a change. So what supports our budget, well, there's a couple of different areas. The first being categorical state aid, and that's based on your enrollment and the allocation that the state determines. That's both for hardware and software. We're able to leverage that money, and it has to be specifically for student, and student technology. Also, we are able to purchase through BOSI's, which is going to generate aid for the following fiscal year, and we're able to leverage that. And then finally, we've got our Federal Reserve, our Technology Reserve, which is a reserve savings account, and this has been approved by the voters to hold funds for strategic, for the purchases that supplement the general funds budget. It does require voter approval, we have leveraged this in, in the past. Some complementary revenues to this, we do have the federal funds, as I talked about earlier. We also have some of the federal E-rate money that can be used for larger purchases outside of the general fund expenses. As I mentioned, kind of getting into this, more of the salaries, contracts, equipment and supplies, the biggest increase you're going to see there is from the salaries, and that's, that reflects really that two additional technology staff members, as well as contractual increases that come along with, with my team. BOSI's Support Services, no change whatsoever, it's essentially a rollover from last year. Back into the technology, contracts, equipment, supplies, those all remain relatively, relatively small. Questions on any of that? Thank you.
So Matt, I just did the math. You had 9,700 help tickets over 365 days. That's 26.5 help tickets a day that you've addressed, your department has addressed, and so that's a huge asset to, to our district. It's amazing that you're able to do that. Our instructional specialists, I also think it's fair to share that they work hard and deliver incredible professional development during the school year and within the year to assist our teachers, so our kids can have the highest level of instruction relative to technology as possible. The focus on STEM is incredibly important, and I like to think that we're ahead of the game there, so thank you for that. And, and last, safety in the technology world is amazing, and so we reimaged many computers this year. It was not fun. I will be the first to say I was miserable.
Yeah.
I actually had to apologize to the entire PD TA organization after I went through it, but it was for two-way
Sorry.
... authentication, so that we can be safe in our schools. So as technology evolves, we're going to have some pain along the way, but we're going to grow and learn. And number one, we need to make sure our students, staff are using technology in a way that's safe for all. So thank you for all of that, and, and thank you for, for dealing with all my grievances along the way.
No, but we're, we're here for support, right?
That's 9,800. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and last, we have Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, Melanie Ward, to talk with us about curriculum and instruction.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be back to present our budget projections along with a little budget history for the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. So you've seen this before, this is the mission of our curriculum here in Pittsburgh. This statement was created several years ago by our team of outstanding standards leaders, and we still stand by this mission, so everything that comes out of my office is focused on providing our learners with authentic, rigorous, engaging learning experiences, so that when they leave us, they can achieve whatever their goals are and become contributing members to a global society. Big picture overview of responsibilities out of the Office of Curriculum and Instruction certainly is the oversight and support of all of our curriculum and assessment writing and implementation. I work with an amazing team of 24 standards leaders who take significant responsibility for curriculum and assessment writing in their area, as well as professional development for members of the department. They each have steering committees that they work with, so groups of teacher leaders within their department, and certainly in all of our work over the last several years, we've had a focus on integrating our equity goals into every aspect of our work. Also, a significant part of our responsibilities, particularly when we are thinking through the lens of budget, is the purchase of our textbooks and supplementary resources, professional learning for all members of our Pittsburgh community staff, and BOSI services that provide support for both regular teaching during the school year and summer school. So we'll break each of those areas apart. This is kind of what's known as the 5-10 code, the curriculum and instruction code out of my office. This portion of my budget is responsible for covering the two FTE salaries, that's just myself and my assistant Lori Hummel, who is my right-hand person in all that happens in my office. This portion of the budget also covers payments for curriculum writing and steering committee meetings, so that's work that teachers are doing beyond their regular work hours to support our curriculum and assessment work. This part of the budget carries a significant portion of money for district textbook purchases, and we use that district textbook funds to purchase resources that are required to be used by all teachers of particular courses across the district. So those are our core instructional materials. There's some traveling conference money here, and then there's a BOSI's portion of this budget that supports Project Lead the Way, the assessment scoring for our three-through-eight assessments, which we outsource, and some of our software applications come out of that BOSI's line, as well as some professional learning costs. There is a little bit of an uptick in this budget proposed for next year, and that comes primarily just due to some year-over-year salary increases and curriculum writing time that we'd like to add a little, a little more to, as well as some additional funding for professional learning, specifically to cover an increased number of teachers that will need to be sent out for AP training by the College Board in anticipation of retirements of teachers currently teaching AP courses. So we're trying to get a jumpstart on some of that this year and next year. The 5-11 budget is our standards budget. This budget primarily is about the salaries and stipends for our 24 standards leaders. Within each standards area, they all have a little bit of money for memberships, supplies, and traveling conference for them to use in their role as standards leaders. Our standards leaders, if you're not familiar with them, and I think our board all is, are teacher leaders who serve in a role that is in most other districts assumed by administrators, and so they take primary, primary responsibility for the instructional leadership in terms of curriculum development in their area. They have incredible credibility with their colleagues because they are still teaching in the classroom, and so they're right down in the mud with the teachers that they're working through, solving problems with, et cetera. So it's a fabulous model that has served us really, really well. Again, there's a bit of an increase request in this budget line. This is due to two primary factors. One is the need that we had this past year, after last year's budget closed out, to add a standards leader position for our behavioral specialists. As we grew our ranks of behavioral specialists to meet the needs of our students in all nine of our buildings, we got to the point where they really needed their own standards leader to lead and guide their work as a department. And then I've also added some money to the, the science standard supply line to help offset some of the costs based on the, some of the materials needed for elementary science curriculum implementation, and also particularly for supplies and materials needed for the newly required investigations that students will need to complete before they're eligible to sit for the new grade five and grade eight science investigation. So the state, in their wisdom, decided that we had four investigations needed at each level, elementary and intermediate, and so that was a bit of an increased cost for us to bear. The professional development budget, the 5-40 budget, this really is the cost of running our Teacher Center. It is not the cost of the actual professional learning that takes place. So Julie Barker, our Teacher Center Director, will be the first to say how appreciative she is and we are as a district of the district's support for the work of the Teacher Center and many other districts. All of the professional learning that is supported really comes just strictly through the Teacher Center grant, which is a separate funding source from the state. But here in Pittsburgh, we as a district support the position, Julie's position as the director. This also covers the salary for instructional materials specialists and for the assistant in the office. The actual professional learning is then paid for through some of the money in my 5-10 budget, through the Title II grant, through the Teacher Center grant, and through a number of other sources. And finally, the 4-70 BOSI's code, this is a little bit of a catch-all in terms of some of the things that we need just for the day-to-day operation of our schools. It includes, again, some elementary science kits for the curriculum at the elementary level, distance learning, scoring of Regents exams, support for our urban suburban program, et cetera. You see that spike in the 21-22 year, that was when we anticipated needing to have an opportunity for many students to, coming out of the temporary learning model year, to continue with the remote learning opportunity, and so we had set aside money in that BOSI's code to allow kids to access the remote program that BOSI's offered. But then fortunately, most of our students, all but about a very small handful, returned to learning in-person with us. And then finally, the summer school program, this is run pretty consistently throughout the year. This is the cooperative summer school that our students are eligible to attend if they have failed a Regents course or a Regents exam. They can retake the course, or they can just attend a review session in order to better prepare to retake the exam itself. And we've calculated a little decrease just based on, just data that tells us that we don't send as many kids to summer school anymore. So putting all those pieces together, these are the, kind of the way the, the different codes lay out in my budget. The 5-10, again, the curriculum instruction proposed budget for next year, you can see the breakdown by area, with again, the largest percent going towards salary, that's again, the two FTEs plus the curriculum development and steering payments for folks. And then you see the next largest portion there being textbooks, and that has edged up over the last several years as just the cost of textbooks and supplementary materials has, has risen, but based on publisher costs. So that's a, a cost we're continually trying to keep up with. A significant percentage of that spending, we do get aid back from the state for instructional materials work. Our standards budget, again, 95% of that budget code is the, goes to cover the cost of the standards leader salaries and stipends, as well as the summer workdays that they're entitled to by contract. The vast majority of the budget in my area does come from our property tax levy with some support, again, through BOSI's aid and through the state instructional materials aid. Some of the things to highlight coming out of our office over the last year or so, we continue the work to align essential curriculum and instruction across all grade levels and buildings. This was something that really kick-started in a big way during the COVID year, and our teachers have found incredible value in what we've come to call our instructional roadmaps that really give them a sense of shared essentials that everybody's responsible for. And so we continue to work to, to support embracing that work and continuing to build out those essential roadmaps. We continue to do significant work in, across all content areas, but specifically in English Language Arts and Social Studies to better reflect the New York State culturally responsive sustaining education framework within the curriculum itself and the resources that we provide to students. We've started the work of integrating the SEL benchmarks, as well as the Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards into our curriculum. And this past year, we developed protocols for the review of all of our instructional materials through the lens of, through multiple lenses, including a review for diversity and representation in materials. Our teachers and students continue to embrace our instructional technology tools, and again, you heard from Matt, the work that they've been doing there, and the amount of professional learning that his department offers to our teachers every year is just extraordinary in terms of both quantity and quality. We've continued to provide multiple platforms for professional learning. This has been another really great thing that came out of COVID for us, so when we think about professional learning, it doesn't always mean coming into room one and doing seat time in here. We provided in various, various ways, various platforms. Just yesterday afternoon, I did an in-person session that was a follow-up to an online book study that we did in the fall, and people really appreciated the platform of being able to do a book study virtually and be able to comment to each other and sort of chat boards, but then also add to that by coming together for some in-person conversation. I'm really excited about some of the work being done currently by our Instructional Leadership Council to identify high-leverage instructional strategies that represent culturally responsive practices in the classroom, but that also link and embody the SEL benchmarks and Pittsburgh's own next-generation skills. So that's been work that's really been a significant focus of ours for the last several months at ILC, and I'm excited about hopefully an upcoming opportunity to share that with you as we bring that work to fruition. Moving forward, we will continue our work to revise and align our curriculum with the New York State framework. We will continue to work on those SEL benchmarks and the Computer Science Digital Fluency standards. Those are both somewhat unique in that they are K-12 sets of standards that are intended to be integrated into all curriculum areas, and it's one of those things where if everybody owns it, nobody owns it, and so we have to be really thoughtful about rolling those out in ways that are meaningful and that all teachers are engaged and understand their responsibility for those standards as well. I'm excited, and Matt touched on this, that we're going to be able to move that one-to-one laptop initiative effectively to a three-through-12 span next year, which is going to be really significant, and when we think about our students starting in third grade, taking their state assessments on the computers, having those computers reliably in their hands consistently throughout the school year is going to be really important. We continue to work on professional learning opportunities in many, many different areas, and of course, we continue focusing on that social, emotional, and mental health support for students and staff. That's something that cuts across all departments as we think forward. So putting it all together on one page, the proposed budgets coming out of my office, you can see there just a, a little bit of an increase for next year when you put it all together, but fairly steady. And with that, I will ask if you have any questions.
Melanie, can you just go to your first slide?
That one?
It couldn't be easier for you. I think this is an important slide to really pay attention to for, for everyone, because the heart and soul of our students and our staff are the work that's in front of them and what's expected of them. So what we put in front of our students is an expectation for all of them to be engaged in rigorous and authentic experiences, so that when they graduate, they're able to independently use their learning to achieve their goals and become contributing members of a global society. The other thing that I would add is that we've done a, a really nice job, and we've shared this many times, that our job is to teach children how to think, not what to think. And so that concept of critical thinking along the way has been instrumental. Often people will say, what's your evidence that you're reaching the goal? And I would certainly share two pieces of evidence. One is our one, five, and 10-year look back at our graduates, and for those that aren't aware, Dr. Kimmer's office does the post-graduation study, or surveys with our students, and what you'll find year in and year out is our students are very well-prepared for college. And so what we are doing with our students is certainly well, well-preparing them for their next steps. I would also just share anecdotally, as having my second child go through college, and all of them, I'm thinking that my kids went through Pittsburgh schools, are saying, your child is going to be very well-prepared, because all of the Pittsburgh students are well-prepared. So want to thank you not only for the work that you do, but for So want to thank you not only for the work that you do, but for how much you've had to adapt over the years, and thank God, we're not in this boat anymore, but I think about our time with trying to figure out how to get our elementary students in school during COVID, and being able to do so, and then thinking about what are we going to do with our 7-12, then thinking about what did we learn from all of this, then thinking about going from one-to-ones, and then the different platforms and how we're communicating with students at a much different level. So just want to thank you and everyone in your department for the incredibly valuable work that you do for Pittsburgh.
Thank you. My honor.
Okay, at this point, it is, well, let me make sure my watch is right. We have nine minutes before the start of our board meeting, so we'll take a brief recess, and we'll start back up at 7 o'clock.